Town council meeting at six o'clock at the Robert de Leo Senior Center. Call to order, please. Denise?
Council Honan. Council Fisillo?
Here.
Council Munson. Council Belcher?
Here.
Council DiMarco?
Here.
Council Flahcutt?
Here.
Council Iowol? Vice President Ruggiero?
Here.
President Laterry?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ask everybody to please rise for the pledge by Councilor DiMarco. Of course, you do that after taking a bite of food. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Circulated for the October 4 meeting. I assume everybody got them and had a chance to look them over. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Council Belcher, second by Council Fisillo. Any questions, deletions, subtractions, additions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seeing no, the ayes have it. Recommendation and information. We talk nothing today. Public hearings we do not have. Public comment? Yes. John Morgan.
Hi, John Morgan, Creek City Department, a member of the Commission on Disabilities. Our commission would like to ask the council tonight. Thank you for the welcome. What he said. And ask the council to revisit the treaty issue we had one night in Somerset Avenue. I believe that there's some information that wasn't brought up originally that could be important to the completion of that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, is this coming from the committee or is this coming from you, John?
It's coming from the committee.
Coming from the commission.
The commission.
Right.
Boy, am I glad you're here.
Thank you very much. We will take that up with town manager and see what our options are on that. And we'll get back to you and have it on the agenda in the next week.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? There will be a second round later.
Thank you, John.
And just for general information here, we are live on WCAT. There is no Zoom option tonight due to just the location of the meeting. There was no other questions, Denise, that had come in?
Correspondence?
No. I thought somebody might be sending in a question that wasn't able, but we did not receive anything. All right.
No, I did not.
All right. So now we'll move right to correspondence. Denise?
Yeah, we had Karina Campobasso, and she's talking about the ordinance review committee changes or recommendations. And she opposes number one, two, and three of the recommendations. And then Diana Veen's also sent a letter of protest.
All right. And I will bring up that letter from Diana. She brought up, which I think is a very good concern, and one of them I had, and I had brought it up a couple of meetings ago. I believe what she was looking at was the corner of Walden and Lincoln where there was an accident. I'm not sure the extent of that accident involved in a pedestrian maybe a week or so ago. And then going back to the corner of Walden and Pauline, which, you know, I said it a handful of meetings ago, and I definitely think that is something that we should address. I'm not sure what the solution is, but I just think that is a very dangerous intersection. We should take a look at what remedies we might have. And I thank Diana for that correspondence. Committee reports. We have no committee reports right now, but we do have a town manager report. Mr. Marino.
Thank you, Council President. I just have an update. You and I met with Peg Lyons from the Winter Housing, and we went over, you know, basically the trash procedures and how it's picked up and what they do over there. And we kind of got an update on how they do it, why the barrels go out, you know, how many units they have and whatnot. So more to follow on that, but we were at least started the groundwork to reach out to the housing community, all the affordable housing units we have in town, and try to figure out what the trash pickup situation there. I was able to go around with Park and Rec Director Sean to do a tour of all the ballfields and parks, which I hadn't done yet. So we are working on a plan to hopefully maintain those better moving forward and also to take care of the new beds that we have in the CBD area. We presented last night a new job description, finalizing a job description for a CFO slash school business manager, a combined position. We've done this before, and the council approved this a while back. We're looking to revisit that and repost that job as both. We all operate off the second floor of Town Hall. There seems to be a lot of benefit, you know, a lot of synergy there. Makes a lot of sense, so we're going to look to post that job description hopefully by the end of the month and then start that process. Those interviews will be held by the school superintendent and I, and then we'll make a decision on who we want to hire. Met with Comcast, the reps from Comcast, along with Mike from WCAT. We're working on redoing the contract that's up shortly and also working on getting some capital money this go-around if we can for, you know, additional equipment for WCAT. So I want to thank everybody that attended the park grand reopening. They did a nice job over there on that facility. We got a nice tour of the model unit and the kitchen, the lounge area. I mean, it's just they did a great job after the flood that they had there. So we thanked them for the invite, and that's all working well. We also met with the owners of the Veterans Road Parcel. The council had asked me to take a look into that. We're going to work on a purchase and sale agreement for that, and more to follow on that, but we are taking into account, you know, the value of the land where they added the fence and put the turf in. So it looks like they're asking, we've negotiated a price of $10,000 for that parcel, so we're working on doing that. And now lastly, there will be, and Director Call is here, we can talk about it a little bit, but there will be a reverse 911 going out tomorrow with regard, we're required now, we all have all iron ductile pipes around, but with the new lead rule that the EPA put out, anytime we test, we have 418 remaining lead services to single-family homes in town and other buildings. And we test weekly. We do 20 samples at all of those, you know, randomly at the 418 sites. And this time around, we had three that tested were above lead action level that they call it. So it's not a boil order, there's no threat to anybody, but we're required to notify the entire town of this as part of the new EPA rule. So we're going to put a reverse 911 out. There'll be information on the website, and obviously, we're going to continue to work with the 418 remaining homes. As the council knows and maybe others don't, is we have a low-interest program with MWRA to replace those water mains. We replace 100 a year, and, you know, by 2026, we should have these done. No interest loans, sorry. Yeah, no interest loans on, to replace that work. So that work continues, and actually, we were applauded for doing so many. Not many towns are doing 100 a year, so we're actually getting them done in a timely fashion. But, you know, this is the new EPA rule, you know, after what happened in Flint, Michigan. So, I mean, and everybody doesn't worry, we have some of the safest water in the country, really, and it all goes through iron ductile pipes. Where the issue is, is the people that still have lead services, it comes off of ours mains and then goes through those lead pipes. And it could be that, and it also could be old solder on pipes inside homes and things like that. But people are made aware, but we have to let the whole town know, so I didn't want anybody to get surprised by that. But that will go out tomorrow, so. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for the town manager? Council Flahcutt?
Thank you, Council President. Town manager, last meeting, Mr. Callis said that he was going to, this is in reference to the TIPS project. Mr. Callis said he was putting in some message to the state saying that we are not happy about the bike lanes. Has he gotten a response?
Yes, we actually have that meeting coming up.
Yeah. I think we need to turn that mic on.
That mic is only connected to CAT.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead. There you go. All right.
The answer to that question is, we've reached out to our consultants, who has reached out to MassDOT. We have, our consultants have come up with several options to save several spots. Wouldn't be all of them. Because some will be launched to other, you know, parts of the project. But they are looking at the bike lanes and see if we, you know, if we can create our kids. They are hearing our argument. I can't say that yes, absolutely we would do it, but that is happening. We actually have an upcoming meeting, I want to say this Friday.
Yeah. Yeah, it's one of the Fridays, yeah.
With our consultant and MassDOT representative. Should have a better ask by the next council.
Very good. Thank you.
Council DiMarco?
Yeah, to build on that argument, I would assume that, like, if we can't do it, it's essentially because of the money we're getting from the program, it's essentially like we're asking them to do this and give us a break, but if we don't get it, we're still going to take.
We're not turning the money.
Yeah.
That's a decision well above my range. But yes, what we're getting is a $6 million project for the investment we have to make with designing in the years to come. It's a decision for all of you and the town manager, but you have to get with the other one if you want to walk away.
Thank you, Mr. Callis.
Any other questions for the town manager? Council Munson?
Thank you, President Laterry. Just wanted to get an update as to where we left off with the old middle school and that parcel and what are our next steps and so forth.
Yep, we're working with the engineers to, as the council requested, you know, get the solid lot lines for the lots and also deal with the chapter land, the chapter 97 issue, the parkland issue, sorry. So we're working on that. We don't have it finalized yet, but we're still, we're making progress on it.
That's great.
All right.
Any other questions for the town? Vice President Ruggiero?
Thank you. In regards to the reverse 911 tomorrow, is that language that we're typing up in-house or is that just boilerplate language that they're telling us that we have to send out to everybody?
A combination of both. There's requirements we have to put in the posting, so we're doing that. And also, we worked with our, John Guilfoyle, our press release to streamline that down because, you know, we can't read five paragraphs on our reverse 911, everybody will hang up. You know, so we streamlined it down to just, you know, probably four or five sentences, but get all the information in we need to and let everybody know, and then obviously direct them to the website for more information.
Okay, yeah, just because in the past, we've done things similar to this, and the reaction is maybe not as anticipated. So I think we want to just also somehow remind folks that this isn't an immediate threat or a danger or things like that.
We were careful how we worded it for just that reason. And that's why we involved John Guilfoyle. We didn't want to create a panic because there's nothing to panic about, but we also wanted to get the message out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. We will move on to the school department report. School department, school committee met last evening. We had a presentation from Matt Cronby, the principal of the high school, who gave us an up-to-date on how the years started out and progressing and gave us some numbers from the high school, which were very pleasant with the number of students now. I want to say somewhere around, and I might be off one or two, but I think 133 in seniors, 135 juniors, about 150 sophomores, and about 165 freshmen. So I remember it was about a decade ago when we had less than 100 graduating at the high school. So I also remember three decades ago when there were 250 graduating from the high school. So times change, but Matt's doing a really good job and just kept us up to date with activities. Drama, which is coming up, I think in November, they're doing the Wizard of Oz, which they do an incredible job, and I would encourage people to get more information on that. I'm not 100% sure on the date. Could be the, I'll ask Wendy if you have them.
The weekend of Veterans Day holiday, Saturday.
11th and, yeah.
Yeah, it's two and seven, right?
I think it's two and seven on Saturday night of Veterans Day weekend and 2:00 on Sunday afternoon. But they put on an incredible show, and I would encourage everyone to attend if possible. The other item on the agenda, which the town manager discussed, talked about posting a position for the CFO slash school business officer, which I think it was about 10 or 11 years ago, the council and the school committee had a joint meeting, and the meeting was about consolidation. And we looked at several departments, one of them being human resources, facilities, and finance. And we had done, we still have consolidation occurring in human resources and facilities, and we let go of the finance a little bit, and now we're trying to get it back on track. So I thank the town manager and the school committee for their approval in going forward with this process. And that was it on the school committee. We will go to old business, and keeping on the agenda is the Trash Enterprise Fund, the Trash Abatement, Trash Enforcement. I know that's still going through a process. I know the council vice president, town manager, Wendy has been, have been going over this. Does the vice president have anything to add on this? So we're going to keep this on the agenda for the following meeting.
Yeah, we can keep it on the agenda. There's a draft ordinance that was sent over to the town manager for review that reflects some of the discussions that we had at our last joint subcommittee meeting. So once we have a chance to go over that and connect, I think that'd be a good time to have another subcommittee meeting before bringing it back to the council.
And also, an item that we're keeping on the agenda is the ORC's recommendations. We will be holding a public hearing on this at least, well, the first public hearing, and I hope to hold an additional one. But we will be holding a public hearing at our next meeting, which is November 1st. We're kind of fortunate this year with the election being the second Tuesday that we're, we don't have to adjust our meeting schedules at all. So we will have a regularly scheduled meeting on November 1st, and there will be a public hearing, the first public hearing for the ordinance review recommendations made. So I encourage a lot of people to attend that. And we will look in the location of that, seeing if we have the idea that we think we're going to have a really good turnout, maybe we'll ask to come back here for that meeting. But we will keep you informed on the location of that, but there will be a public hearing, first meeting in November, November 1st. DRC presentation, we still have them on the docket, and we're hoping that they are in the first or second meeting in November. We have many questions to ask the DRC, the DCR, not the DRC, but the DCR in terms of the beach and the upkeep and the maintenance and the parking on the beach and responsibilities. So they're very hard to track down, but they have informed us that they will be coming one of our meetings in November. Discussion on CBD parking requirement signage, and I believe that is still in committee. Council Vice President?
Yep, again, a quick conversation was had this week with the town manager. Some administrative i's are being dotted and t's crossed before we put together formal ordinance language to be presented to, you know, this full body.
All right. Well, moving on to new business. We have a motion from the town manager in accordance with the charter of Town of Winter. He moves that town council vote to amend its June 7, 2022 vote approving the town manager's proposed Solid Ways Enterprise Fund budget for fiscal year '23 by decreasing the amount appropriated for operations and maintenance by $100,000 and reducing funding from retained earnings by $100,000. I'll take any other action relative there, too. Going to send this to finance, but I would like a little update to Robbie and to help everyone to understand this motion.
So fund, the retained earnings should not have been used as a funding source. We missed it when we were putting the budget together. The trash fund was in its first year last year, so then it would have had no retained earnings that it could use to fund the FY '23 budget. We will have retained earnings as of 6/30/22, or technically 7/1/22. I estimate it to be above $500,000. We just can't use them until they're certified by the state. So the state will certify those in the next month or two, and we could reappropriate that $100,000 if need be. However, looking at the numbers today, I think we're going to be okay lowering it by that $100,000. Our tipping fees have been about 60% of what we budgeted, maybe 65%. So we have even some cushion with it going up.
And we do have that cushion, but tipping fees, it's not a guarantee on anything, right? And especially with the way the world's going right now and the economy.
We'll keep an eye on it, and if we have to, once the retained earnings are certified, we'll present a motion and request that fund.
Well, we will send that to finance. Okay. Now, we have also a motion from the town manager that the council vote to appropriate $247,775 from retained earnings in the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund to a new line to pay a water main master plan and long-term capital improvement plan or take any other action relative there, too. I will also be sending that to finance, but ask Robbie or the town manager for an update on that.
Yep, I'll just start the, yep, so this is using water sewer retained earnings, again, that have not been certified yet. So the vote won't come back to this council until they're certified. This is just getting it on the agenda for the finance committee so they can discuss it. As far as the actual project?
Yep, I'll jump in on that. This was presented to the council a few meetings ago, our last meeting. You know, one of the requests was, is like we're doing with the facilities needs assessment for the buildings and school and town buildings, we're doing the same for the water mains and the related infrastructure. So we're going to create a long-term CIP and master plan. Woodward and Curran's going to do it for us. We put it out to Weston and Sampson as well, but they did not get back to us with pricing as was requested of us, but Woodward and Curran gave us a price, which is fair, you know, similar projects I've done in the past. So it was, it was a good price, and that's where the $247,000 came from. And then this will give us a long-term plan for water mains and, you know, when they need to be replaced and moving forward, give us an idea of how we need to spend the money, so.
All right, very good. Thank you, and refer that to finance. Also, there's a motion by a town manager that town council vote to appropriate $101,786.4 from building maintenance stabilization to a new special article to pay for a facilities needs assessment for the town and school buildings to be formed by brightly school dude or take any other action relative there, too. This will also be sent to finance. This is something that the town manager has discussed with us at a couple of past council meetings, but I'll hand it over to the town manager to go over it a little bit more.
Thank you. Yeah, this is what I referred to before. We had, actually, had a presentation from representatives from this company come in, present to the board. So this is not only, most of this is the $61,000 approximately for the facility condition assessment, facilities needs assessment for approximately 561,000 square feet of town and school buildings. The remaining funds are going for some software. Like I said, the school already utilizes this software, so we'll just be picking up and now using it on the town side as well. The benefits of this, it'll give us a 25 to 30-year capital plan for all our buildings. You know, we'll be able to break that out into the five-year capital plan and let us know what we need to replace and when. It also allows us to do long-term, you know, it has preventative maintenance options in the program. It'll tell us when we need to be changing air filters. It'll just be a great tool for the facilities department. So we're looking forward to this. We're actually going, myself, Director Callis, and Rich Saffoni are going up to Boston on Friday. They're doing a presentation, this company's doing a presentation in Boston on the software and sort of a trade show, so we're going to go up and see the software in person and be able to ask some questions and things like that. So that includes in the $101,000, and we're looking forward to, you know, getting moving on it.
Well, thank you. This has been a big desire of the council, and I know myself over this past year, to make sure we have a proper plan for maintenance of all our buildings. And, you know, I think we've done a good job with the, with the new schools, that they've been there for almost 20 years now, a little over 20 years. But I think we, you know, this has always been an issue with the town, and I'm sure many other towns, too. It always seems to be the first thing that gets cut or go, but to have a plan like this that we could stick to and maintain, I think it's really good for the town. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the committee handbook, which has been passed out. I just wanted to have a little discussion tonight. We won't be voting on it this evening. Council Flahcutt?
When I was reviewing it, I was a little confused. This is, most of the pages are not numbered, but this is under meetings and procedures and attendance and quorums. There's a phrase in there that says, "and will be counted from quorum purposes." Does that mean they're not going to be counted, or does that mean they're counted separately or from quorum purposes? Sounds a little confusing.
I, I think that that's supposed to be for quorum purposes.
Ah ha, that makes more sense.
Mistake. Scrubbing his hair.
Okay. In addition, I would like to recommend that the line that appears on the bottom of each page be eliminated since sometimes it needlessly underlines the last line or it crosses it out. So if we just eliminate it on every page, we can figure it out.
I think that's easy enough to do.
That's my comment.
That's all you got?
Thank you.
Any other comments on the handbook? Council Belcher?
I won't go through all the, like, little things, but I think it may be a good idea to put together some templates for meetings and agendas and things like that. There is a template for a motion in here, which is excellent, so I think it would be a good idea to just have some additional templates, maybe as an appendix. But I think this is very good. I mean, the idea is to be able to give it to a new committee member and have them feel comfortable jumping right in. So I think it does a good job of that. And then one other comment is, I'm not sure if this is necessary, but some way to make sure that people appointed to committees read this and agree to follow it may be a good practice to put in place.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent practice, have them sign something that. All right, any other discussion points? All right, we'll have this on the agenda for the next meeting and hopefully.
Councilor.
Yeah. Vice President.
Thank you. Could we also circulate this to our committee chairs? Just, you know, they're the ones that are going to be, you know, abiding by this, so if they could get some feedback to us as well, I think that would be pretty good, too. I know it's on the website, but.
No, it is. It's a good idea. Thank you. More work for us, Denise. Anybody else? All right, committee appointments. I do have one committee appointment this evening, I believe. I do have one, one appointment, that the council accept the nomination appointed by town council president. Laterry do appoint Kelly Gall to the Commission on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations or take any other action relative there, too. I have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Council Belcher, second by Councilor DiMarco. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. CDIC, CDICR agenda item. I attended the CDICR meeting last Wednesday, and, you know, there was, there was a lot of good discussion there, and we're trying to, you know, I don't know how else to say it, but give more meat to the committee, to make it more viable, to make them feel more wanted. And I think one way to do that, and a lot, there's so many committees and committee meetings going on that it's hard for a lot of people to remember when they are, to get to them, to watch them on wherever they may be, if they're on TV. So I think one important thing, and I had made this suggestion several years ago, to put the school committee update on the, on the agenda because I think it's important. I mean, that was one of the major goals of the, of the charter, was to have that connection there, and I think it's worked out well over the years. So I would like to make a motion this evening that the town council vote to amend town council rules and procedures, rule number four, order of business, to include an added agenda item of a report from the CDICR or take any other action relative there, too. Do I have a second for that? Do I, do I have a motion?
Second for discussion.
Motion's made by Council Belcher, second by Councilor DiMarco for discussion. And I'll open the discussion on this. And similar to the school, I still think we need to have, we are still looking for a school representative on the CDICR. That's number one. And we had discussed having a, I know the town manager will, you know, as the schedule permits, but he is all in on attending these meetings. And I would like to have, and I am going to try to attend as many as I can possibly attend, but it would be great to have a strict representative from the council. If not, I would like to, at least at the beginning, have, to make sure that we have a councilor present to make, to then be able to come back at our meetings and give a report. So people have an idea of what's going on, because they put in a lot of work, and I think it's important for the town to understand what they're doing and how they're doing it. But is there other discussion on the motion that was made by Council Belcher? Councilor DiMarco?
I would be happy to volunteer for that position, but I think there needs to be some discussion internally or externally regarding how, how that works in terms of a representative on that committee. So I'd be happy to volunteer. I think it would, it would be, be a blessing for me. I think it would be a great experience, but I think maybe this isn't something we should decide tonight. Maybe this is something that should be put off till the next meeting.
Put off, you're, you're applying for this or put off this motion?
No, I, I would definitely apply for this. I would definitely appreciate it, but. I would definitely appreciate it, but, um, at this point, like, I, I might use my privilege to put it off, uh, till the next meeting.
Uh, okay, you do have a privilege to, uh, to put this off till the next meeting. This will be on, uh, November 1st, um, uh, November 1st agenda, Denise. Thank you. Okay, uh, second round of public comment. Yes, John Morgan?
Hi, John Morgan, greeting for, I have my notes in order this day. I would like to ask the town manager, with the reverse 911, is that available in different languages? I don't believe I heard anything said about that.
Um, not, yes, it is. Yep, sorry, I'm getting the thumbs up from the fire, from the fire chief who takes care of that. Yes, it is available in multiple languages.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other public comments?
Yes. Evening, everybody. It's John DeRoz from precinct six. Mr. Ruggiero's precinct. I'm also a member of the board of license. It's good to be with you guys. Two things, one, um, wholeheartedly support the motion that you just entertained. Um, I was a member of the Human Rights Commission in Melrose when I lived there. Uh, I served for three years and I lived in that town for eight. And they made a huge impact in the town. They dealt with some difficult issues and the only way that they were able to be effective was leadership and investment from the leadership of the town. And obviously, investment and involvement and time from the community as well. So for what it's worth, wholeheartedly support, uh, what you're trying to do in that appointment. Thank you. Um, the reason that I really rose though was, uh, to tee up, uh, an item for the November 1st meeting and also give some kudos. Um, the issue that I'm teeing up, uh, is I live at Coral and Shirley, so I'm one block from the beach. Yep. And after about eight conference calls a day in my busy sales life, I do like to take a walk along the beach and I always pass, uh, the Winthrop, uh, welcome to Winthrop Beach, the DCR sign at the top of Winthrop Beach. And I emailed two Saturdays ago, the town council, to, uh, let them know about unfortunately something that's going on repeatedly at that sign, which is, um, someone is choosing to deface that sign in the words of F. Joe Biden. And the email that I sent to you guys, um, was responded to in five minutes by you, Jim. So first of all, that's probably the most responsive, uh, email in the history of, uh, a, a resident emailing the town council and getting a response. And then two hours later, Stephen responded as well. So just first of all, thank you to you guys. Um, I do know that this is an issue that's going to be on the November 1st, uh, list. For those of you who don't know, what's been happening every time this gets written on the sign is that poor Brian Murray from the, uh, DCR, uh, gets his paint bucket and drives over to the sign, paints over it. Uh, to my knowledge, it's happened three times. It may have happened more than that, but I'm personally aware of three times it's happened. So obviously, we want to do better than just having to call poor Brian and have him bring his paint bucket every time and, and clean it up. So I won't go into a lot of detail because I know we're going to cover it at the next meeting, but there were specific recommendations that I made to you guys and, uh, hopefully we'll be able to talk about it with the DCR. It's an interesting place to live because I haven't lived in a place where you have state jurisdiction over one beach and one shore drive. And then you come to my house one block away and you're, you're not in that jurisdiction anymore. So it's definitely a classic example of town-state needing to work together. So I'll be here on the 1st. Um, and if you need any support in making sure the DCR actually shows up on the 1st for that discussion, just let me know. I'm happy to reach out to them again.
Thank you. And just follow up to make sure I know it's one meeting in November. I can't guarantee it's the 1st or the 15th, but it will be, you'll see it on the agenda.
Sounds good. Thank you guys so much. Thank you.
Public comments. Okay, public relations. It is, it is, it is election season once again. Seems like it's always election season. I know Denise, how much Denise appreciates that.
Not for us though, Jim.
But I did have here a list of, I do have here. So early voting in the, uh, election starts October 22nd. Um, and there, I, I do have a list here. I don't have the days. Is the 22nd Saturday?
Yes.
Yeah. So Saturday, the 22nd, early voting begins at Winthrop Town Hall Library. On the 22nd, it's 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Uh, on Sunday, there is none. On Monday, October 24th, 10:00 AM to 1:00. On Tuesday, the 25th, 4:00 PM to 6:00. On Wednesday, the 26th, 10:00 AM to 1:00. On Thursday, the, uh, 27th, 4:00 PM to 6:00. Friday, the 28th, 10:00 AM to 12:00, noon. Um, Saturday, the 29th, 10:00 AM to 4:00. Sunday, again, none. On the 30th, October 31st, Monday, 9:00 to 2:00. Tuesday, the 1st, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Wednesday, the 2nd, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Thursday, the 3rd, 10:00 to 6:00. And Friday, the 4th, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then election day will be on November 8th. Uh, we will be using the same voting locations as we use precinct, in, in the past election. Precinct four will vote at Golden Drive. Precincts one, two, three, five and six will vote at the old middle school gymnasium.
Council president?
Councila DiMarco.
Just for the record, um, for the early voting, that's all at the Harvey Room, correct?
That is all at the lobby of the town hall. It's in the first lobby.
Lobby at the town hall. So which, which room number is that?
It's right in the lobby.
It's the lobby.
As you walk in the door.
Okay.
Right there.
Okay. Thank you.
Public relations, uh, Vice President Wajeroa?
Uh, I think I'm all set.
Council Flockhart?
Nothing.
Council Ayalo?
Just another congratulations to the DCR and the friends of Bella Amash for their fall festival on this past weekend. Um, great event. They had over 300 attendees. Lots and lots of Winthrop people benefited from it. Um, so just a nod to great organizing and, and getting the word out.
Councila DiMarco?
Um, what, what Counselor Ayalo said, other than that, I don't have anything.
Council Belcher?
Um, just about the Better Bus Network redesign by the MBTA. They're going to be releasing the maps that have the input adjusted. Um, those should be coming out very soon. There is a public meeting on Wednesday, November 2nd, 6:00 PM on Zoom. This is probably the only meeting before the board of directors will vote on the network redesign. So you can go onto the MBTA network, I mean, website and sign up for updates. You'll hear when the new maps are released. So please pay attention to that and be ready to make public comment if needed.
Council Fusillo? Council Munson?
Yes, thank you. Um, we at the Odd Fellows are working with the Winthrop Community Food Pantry to start a food drive. Uh, and that's going to be all month and culminating on November 26th, where we'll be hosting a, uh, a community lunch, pasta lunch. But, uh, the Winthrop Community Food Pantry is not looking for just food, but they're looking for personal goods. So anything from soap to toothpaste, toothbrushes and all of the things you can, that you normally shop for. They have a lot of pasta there. They have a lot of canned goods, but they don't have a lot of personal goods. So if anyone would like to make a donation, you can do so during normal business hours at the Beacon Gallery at 196 Winthrop Street, uh, 10 to 5 every weekday and 10 to 2 on Saturday. And then it culminates again on November, the Saturday after Thanksgiving with a community lunch.
Rob, would you sit back?
Thank you, Council Flockhart.
Um, Council Munson, are you accepting diapers at this drive?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I will say once again, I encourage people to, um, get tickets. I, it's 11, uh, November 12th, Saturday and 13th, uh, at the Nail, Nail Shapiro Center at the high school to see the Wizard of Oz performed by the, uh, Winthrop Bicycle Drama Association. And, um, I think it's 2:00 and...
7:00.
7:00 on Saturday evening and 2:00 in the afternoon on Sunday. Um, also to follow up on Council Belcher's point, I had asked Denise Quist to try to, and maybe with the help of Council Ayalo, we can, we want to try to have some representative from the MBTA in at one of our meetings in November. We also have lots of questions for them. Thank you. So we will be adjourning this meeting now. We'll be taking a 15-minute break and we will come back for a fall forum. Uh, totally different meeting. We will not be coming back for a council. We, uh, do I have a motion for adjournment? Motion by Council Belcher, second by Councila Fusillo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you.